Wednesday, May 28th, Planning Commission meeting of Bluffton Township to order. If I can get a roll call, please.
Charlie Wetmore.
Here.
Vice Chairman Jim Flynn. Commissioner Michael Brock. Commissioner Rich Delcor.
Here.
Commissioner Lydia DePaul. Commissioner Dan Farrow.
Here.
Commissioner Will Howard.
Here.
Okay, notice regarding adjournments. The Planning Commission will not hear new items after 9:30 unless authorized by a majority vote of the commission members present. Items which have not been heard before 9:30 may be continued to the next regular business meeting or an additional meeting date as determined by the commission members. Would like to entertain an adoption of minutes. Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? I noticed passes unanimously. Public comments, do we have public comments this evening? Okay, public comments. Just say if you do have a public comment, please be respectful, do not attack the commission personally, we are volunteers here trying to do the best we can to make our town a better place. There it is. It is limited to a total of three minutes per meeting, regardless of whether the person is speaking on their own behalf or as an agent for others. You may not donate, transfer, yield, or give any portion of your speaking time to another person. All comments are to be conducted from the podium and directed to Planning Commission as a whole, not to any member thereof. All speakers shall be mindful and respectful of those participating in or present at the meeting. Speakers shall be expected to be civil in their language and shall refrain from comment or behavior that involves disorderly speech or action, name-calling, personal attacks, threats, obscene or indecent remarks, and/or disruptive actions. Fortunately, we have not had it happen in Planning Commission, but it has happened in other entities in the town. Please confine your comments to issues under the jurisdiction of town. Do not use "public comment" period to promote or advertise awards, businesses, services, goods, or candidates for public office. It, also, when you come up to the podium, please just state your name and your address so we know where you live in the town and how your relationship to be in that. Okay.
Want to call anybody, let the record show that Michael Brock joined at 6:01.
Hey, Michael. Good evening.
Kristi Moeen.
Hello, this is actually from Glenda Mikulak, who cannot be here today, so I'm reading her letter.
You cannot technically speak on behalf of someone else, so this will be from you.
Okay, she got permission from Dan Fraser before this meeting, and she told me to come. Okay, okay. So this is about the development on Green Street across from Boundary. So she read the revised plan.
What is the address?
Her at 95 Green Street, so directly behind the lot that's in question. So, the plan dated April 1st, we have some questions and concerns. One is the hardscape, we see that the developers plan to use brick pavers at the end of the parking lot and the apron of the parking lot entrance, however, there's no plans to update Green Street. This street is currently a ghost road, used by four residents, and is already in unpaved and unkept state with large potholes. The concern is that traffic added to this development from deliveries, customers, and residents would further erode this area, causing issues for the existing residents as possible stormwater runoff issues. So they would, just like, we'd like to know what that plan is, if it's going to be connected or not, so that's the first concern. Second one is the tree canopy, looking at the site analysis, the existing tree canopy shows that it's only 1,600 square feet, and the lot's 12,600 square feet, but there's a whole heck of a lot more than 10% coverage of existing tree canopy. So the concern is with existing tree canopy, there's at least four very mature, large live oaks there, which we'd hate to lose, and then, so I guess we'd like to see a more accurate existing tree canopy. The proposed tree canopy seems a little bit off, it shows that it would make about double the amount of tree cover, but now it's pretty much all the way covered, so I'm not sure how it could do that. But the other part, if you look at the yellow part of that diagram on the shading, it shows 100% canopy coverage over the entire parking lot area, but there's only two trees planned. So we just want to make sure that the existing tree canopy is looked at very carefully, as well as what the future tree canopy is going to look like. Then, about like form-based code and density, so again, the number of trees that would be there. So that area of Bluffton, with, there's not really a commercial look right now, and it's kind of the backdrop for a lot of our festivals, our tree lighting and everything else. So it looks like a very dense part of commercial development right there in the middle of it, so that's just a concern from her as well, or me, I'll say. And then, the commercial density, we really couldn't figure out, so we know there's 12,600 square feet, but the footprint looked much larger than what was reported, because there's two very large buildings and then also two carriage houses, so just kind of wanting to understand what the actual footprint is. And then from a person who will live directly behind there, the question is, can there be fencing put up? Because if you look at how the parking's set, those lights will go directly into the residential house right behind it, so we didn't know if there might be a consideration to put up a fence behind where those bushes are in the plan, so that doesn't go directly onto the property, and then also hoping that we could see a plan for lighting off of the buildings, because if there's like a big spotlight off the top of the building, that would go directly in the windows of the property right behind. And then last, there, that was the lighting. Want to make sure it's in my three minutes. So I guess that's it, you know, and just kind of the, the commercial look, the tree canopy, and make sure that the Green Street, the ghost road is kind of taken care of, so it doesn't get in more disarray. Okay?
You have your thing.
Thanks.
And while we can't address any of your comments directly to you, Mr. Fraser, this project, if, if approved tonight, will have to come back for lighting, landscaping, and so on, because.
Right, yeah, final development plan will have to include a photometric plan for lighting, as well as landscape.
Okay, okay.
Doc Bertie.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to sleep, it's Berdick. Berdick.
And your address, Ms. Bertie?
Oh, I'm sorry, 3 Hickory Trace. And Glenda and I did not communicate on this, but I have a lot of the same concerns that she does, one being the tree removal, I saw even on comments from the town, there's a lot of significant trees to be removed, and, you know, I would just like to see trees stay in Old Town, you know, we've had a lot of tree loss already, so I would just like to see a plan where more trees can be saved, less cut down. And I'm wondering why more mixed use, it seems like we already have a lot of mixed use in Bluffton. I like the Old Town Bluffton feel, I mean, I grew up going to Myrtle Island my whole life, and I love the Old Town Bluffton feel, I know it's not that anymore, but, you know, if we could kind of keep it that somehow. Consideration for the homeowners, just as she said, fencing or something, you know, for those homeowners that are already there to protect us. I know the original plan showed to put a dumpster right in front of number 1 Hickory Trace, I see that y'all have addressed that, but even the thought that it was going to be put there. Also, have y'all considered the congestion on Boundary Street? Do you ever go down Boundary Street on Thursdays when the farmer's market is there? I mean, seriously, I'm not.
I'm sorry, we're not allowed to respond to you.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
It's not that we don't want to, it's just as a public body, we can't.
Okay, all right, it's okay, anyway.
Believe me, I want to respond to that.
It's very, it's very congested, and sometimes I can't get out of my driveway from the cars down there, so it concerns me that people would be parked at the farmer's market but want to cross over Boundary Street to come to these shops, and honestly, it's not safe, I mean, it's just not safe down there to be doing that. High-traffic times, you know, so farmer's market, festivals, you know, we just had the May Fest, the seafood festival, you know, just all kinds of different things down there. And I also am very concerned about the density, four buildings on this little lot, this lot is about the same size as my lot, my lot is right out a quarter of an acre, I say this is about a third of an acre, I think. Four buildings on one lot just seems like a lot to me, a lot of density. So, anyway, I don't really have anything else to say, I appreciate y'all listening to my comments. Thank you.
Lonnie and Monday.
Good evening, Ms. Monday.
Follow my neighbor Dot in. The density issue.
Your address first, Ms. Monday.
Oh, I'm sorry, 103 Lawrence Street. The density issue, but my most concern is the traffic, it has nothing to do with the festivals, nothing to do with the farmer's market, because generally there are police and things there. But when I walk, and of course there's no sidewalk on that side of the road, you have to cross over to Martin Family Park and that to get a, you know, a sidewalk to go anywhere, wherever you're going. But, the kids that play there, and the balls that they kick, which I've picked up on my end, my dirt road of Lawrence, that they kick across sometimes from the Martin Park, not from the boys, but if the developer, if y'all approve this and put that there, number one, a sidewalk on that side, and number two, if the developer could do a speed bump about midway in Martin and midway in the other park, but I'm talking about every single morning, I come out to go to work, and if they're turning off a bridge street, they're flying to the four-way stop. If they're turning off the four-way stop, they are flying. And I know that they thought about lowering the speed limit, but I don't think the speed limit is the issue, because you can't have, we don't have somebody that can sit there every day, you'd be stopping every second car. But if there could be some speed bumps put there so that cars can't fly down that road, number one, safer for the tourists, safer for the children, safer for the residents, but that little lot is going to get four buildings, and I'm going to admit, I haven't studied the, all of it, I got it in the mail, but I don't know exactly the square footage of those. And what, when you say "commercial," what kind of commercial is it, is it like, you know, the real estate office there, is it like the retail, little retail shop there? I mean, I don't know what, because that zone for commercial, I think it's even zoned for manufacturing, and it's got a lot of stuff in that zoning that you, you know, you could open up. And, there are not that many of us between Hayward Cove and Boundary Street. And I'm the only person, well, there's a renter, one house next to mine, but other than that, I'm the only one on that dirt area. But, that traffic flying back and forth, and the lot on corner, that could easily be developed the same way, it's like you just have one house behind it, or two houses behind it, and all of those people have to contend with anybody coming into that. So I don't know what the parking is going to be like, you know, the access, what type of, you know, what they're doing there, but my biggest concern is Boundary Street, which is already mad.
Can I let them speak?
Order.
They wanted to make a public comment, but they couldn't find the link to.
Ask, ask the chairman. Fuck, I didn't hear that. I'm.
Mr. Reed wants to make a comment, but he did not fill out the form.
Which, which, Mr. Reed? I'll, I'll, I'll let you make it. Son, I'm not too sure. Name and address, sir.
John Reed, 38 Minute Man Drive, hey guys. Anyway, I just want to go on record, the University LLC is one of the three parties to the Ninth Amendment that y'all are going to talk about, and I discussed it with the town, or just while ago, and they assured me they would meet, they had told me they would meet with us before they did made any changes. I just want to go on record that we want to, we want that meeting, and that we are party to it because we, we were partying, that's all I wanted to say, okay?
There is, Mr. Fraser, there is, in this process, this is a workshop tonight for that item, correct? Yeah. This is getting it started, so I could see where that may not have happened yet. Okay, any other public comments?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Next, no, no, old business down to new business, item number one, 67 to 69 Green Street, a request by Randolph Stewart on behalf of Olympia Rime Co. for approval of preliminary development plan application. The project consists of two two-story mixed-use buildings totaling approximately 1,333 square-foot commercial and 1,535 square-foot residential each, as well as two carriage houses totaling approximately 918 square foot each, with associated parking, utilities, and stormwater infrastructure. The property is Zown Neighborhood Center Historic District. The property is Zoned Neighborhood Center Historic District and consists of approximately 0.29 acres identified by tax map numbers in the agenda, located on the northeast corner of Boundary Streets and Green Streets. Mr. Frazier?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a preliminary application for 67-69 Green Street. It's a request by Randolph Stewart on behalf of Olympia Rimco for approval of a preliminary development plan. The applicant proposes one mixed-use building and one carriage house on each of two platted adjacent lots. The 0.29 acre subject properties are Zoned Neighborhood Center Historic District, and they're located northeast corner of Boundary Street and Green Street east of Martin Family Park. Subjected properties are also within the Old Town Historic District and will require certificate of appropriateness historic district prior to building permit submittal. Here is the location of the two parcels at the northwest corner of Boundary Street and northeast corner of Boundary Street and Green Street. There's an aerial of the same location. The applicant proposes two two-story mixed-use buildings that will total 1,333 square feet of commercial and 1,535 square feet of residential each. And it'll, and there will also be two carriage houses totaling approximately 918 square feet. Required parking spaces are 10, and they are providing 10 parking spaces. It's going to be accessed from a 22-foot access easement that will be coming off of the unpaved Green Street. There'll also be pedestrian access provided along Boundary Street. The site plan includes removal of several significant trees, including one live oak, 30-inch live oak, and four laurel oaks that are 25, 24, 24, and 36 inches. While the Arborist recommends retaining the 30-inch live oak, it is proposed to be removed with this application. The landscape plan meets the required 75% tree canopy coverage. The applicant also included an automobile turn exhibit. We had asked for that as a comment from our Development Review Committee meeting. It's over there on the right side of the slide. However, it demonstrates that a vehicle is unable to execute a turnaround without encroaching outside of the drive lane. So we've got a 22-foot drive lane. I think it's got one foot of flush curb on each side of it, so it's really 20 feet of the drive lane. But as demonstrated, if you looked at it in your packet, you can see... Let me see if I can get this to work for you here. Didn't mean for it to work that good. Tool wrong page. I did. Let me try that again. Right up here, it encroaches, it encroaches over the 22, 22-foot drive lane, as you can see in the upper left corner of that. So the applicant includes an automobile turn exhibit, however, it demonstrates that a vehicle is unable to execute the turnaround without encroaching outside of the drive lane. Staff also recommends that the dumpster be relocated as it is too close to the adjacent residential dwelling units. That's the north of the property, north of that access drive. And actually, the residential property that is on Hickory Trace adjacent to this is very close to their front property line. So this dumpster is located very close to the front door of, of that property. Here's the site plan, a little bit closer up. This is the 22-foot access drive, parking to the right. These are the carriage houses. This is, this is the two structures that would be mixed-use structures with commercial on the first floor, residential on the second floor. This is a covered sidewalk going across the front. There'd actually be a, a, this, this would tie to a crosswalk on the other side. Our Public Works provided comments on this. They're doing a Boundary Street, streetscape project right now that a crosswalk could be provided here. However, the applicant is also showing a tie back onto Boundary Street up here. We'd be recommending that this be removed altogether. This wouldn't be a continued sidewalk going up this side of Boundary Street. This is the landscape plan provided with the application. I can return to either one of these. Planning Commission shall consider the criteria set forth in Section 310.3A of the UDO in assessing the application for a preliminary development plan. These are the criteria, the responsive criteria were included in your packet in the staff report. Planning Commission has the authority to approve the application as submitted, approve the application with conditions, table the application, or deny the application as submitted by the applicant. Should the Planning Commission choose to approve the application with conditions, town staff finds that the following conditions should be met prior to final development plan. Approval to be in conformance of UDO Section 310.3A. One would be to relocate the dumpster to minimize impact on the adjacent residential properties. Two would be revise the site plan to provide adequate vehicle turnaround. And three would be coordinate all utility connections with the town and utility providers to ensure consistency with ongoing capital, capital improvement projects. Have a suggested motion, but I'll jump to the questions slide and open it up for any questions.
Why don't we hear from the applicant first? And then we'll go ahead and go down the row. Would the applicant like to speak?
Yes, I would, but if you'd like, I can...
Yeah.
After he makes his comments.
Well, I'd, I'd, I'd rather hear from you now, if it's okay. Come on up, state your name and... Get to the project, and then we can have our discussion. And if we have any other questions, we can...
Randolph Stewart, our Stewart Design. I've designed quite a few things in Bluffton over the last 20-plus years. Towne Promenade, Stock Farm, Tavie Roads, just to name a few. Thank you for all your, your, your comments. I agree with, with all of them. I would like to say, I actually have 12 parking spaces. There's two, one, there's a plan that I gave that's not in the package. But I have, between the two buildings, there's two parking spaces there. So we, so we've discussed the, by the way, the civil engineer, Nathan Sturri is here also, as well as the owner. But that we can use that space for additional backup space for the turnaround. That'll take care of that. As far as the Dempsey dumps are concerned, we'll make it smaller. I would like to point out that there's a covered walkway on the west side of the building before you get to Boundary Street. And we did that on purpose because citizens can use that covered walkway to pass from Green Street to Boundary Street. So there would be covered, covered walkway and a sidewalk there.
I need to address...
Originally, there was a 12-foot easement on the east side that we felt was too small and inhibited. We eliminated the 12-foot easement, and we went with the center road, okay? And the good thing about that center road, it's all going to be a brick, pervious brick pavers. Sanset brick, okay? So originally, we had gravel, then we went to asphalt. But right now, we're back to aesthetic brick on that road. You can't use Boundary at the top, I mean, Green Street. Green Street's the only way in right now. Both the carriage houses and the commercial mixed-use houses, buildings, are very much in keeping with the architecture, scale, and feel of Old Town Bluffton, especially in a, a point area, point area, you clean it out there. And there would be foot traffic. But that's another reason why we did covered walkway, four-foot traffic. Not all in the street, so not just in the street. Happy to answer any other questions, and the owners here, as well as the civil engineer. Did a good job with that, as Nathan Sturri always does, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Let's start with any questions or comments. You want to start, Will?
So, staff report, Dan, you claim that, in the, in the staff report, just paraphrasing, that it, it met the, the requirements of the UDO. But I am concerned, UDO 533C regarding landscaping brings up the issue of the trees that are being removed. And to paraphrase, basically, every consideration should be taken in site planning to preserve the trees that are on site. I think it's very clear here that all consideration was not, all effort was not made to preserve the trees, especially the live oak that was recommended to be retained by the Arborist report. So there are several things that could be done. Building footprints could be reduced. Buildings could be built on piers to preserve the root system, not impact the, the root system under the drip line. I don't, I don't see where any of that was considered because it looks like every bit of the, I think, 75% impervious is allowed here. And it looks like every bit of it was utilized. So I would, I would like to see possibly some reconsideration for that. I have concerns about the turning movements in the drive aisle. The turning exhibit that was provided shows you have to enter into the garage to make a turning movement. So I, I have concerns with that. I would like to see that updated. Also, there was reference by the applicant to pervious pavers, but all the exhibits that were presented are showing sanset pavers. So, you know, update your, your application package to reflect that. Oh, I have it at this point, I'm sure.
I know we're going to go down the line here, but seeing as you brought up the Arborist report, Dan, do you have a copy of that you can bring up or no? If not, that's okay. There, there, there were a number of Hickory, I'm sorry, laurel oaks on there that are toward end of life. But specifically on the Arbor, thank you, Commissioner Delcor. Specifically on the Arborist report, there's a magnolia that's pointed out as being in good location. As of three years ago, it was almost a seven-inch magnolia. It happens to be in the middle of where one of the carriage houses is proposed. And the Arborist recommended that it be removed because it's too close to an adjacent tree. But the adjacent tree is also suggesting to be removed. So in my opinion, that magnolia and that live oak, this site plan needs to be done around those two trees at a bare minimum. But I just wanted to add that because you brought up the live oak. Any comments?
Just clarification, Mr. Stewart. Regarding the dumpster, did you say you would make it smaller or that it would be relocated? Smaller? Yeah, I think this is the effect on, with that, the location on the property, if it's contained within, you know, those are going to be, that are going to be utilizing it so it's not an eyesore, that it's not pest control issue for that neighboring property. The dumpster needs to be located, I'll say, more central to the overall development.
Start all the way down at the end.
I had one question about Green Street. I was just down looking at this, the trees on this property and the street, seeing that Green Street was the access. It's already got, it's already very worn. There's, there's holes in it, it's dirt, it's a dirt road anyways. Was there nothing planned on improving, at least to that, to that drive for Green Street?
Yes, there, there was not. It's, I don't know if it's recognized as a, as a ghost road. It can't be improved on right now, is that correct?
Before you answer that, that, that is a concern I had written down here too, is can we allow access off of a ghost road that nobody owns?
So, as y'all know, Rich and Bruce, we're putting on a Brooks and Bruce here for the Planning Commission. Say that to the folks who aren't familiar. So you asked about Green Street being a ghost road. So ghost roads, as y'all know, are roads that have an unclear ownership origin. So who was the last record holder of those? Town of Bluffton contends and believes and has, you know, the town council has passed a number of resolutions and ordinances declaring that those are public rights away. But they have been publicly dedicated by use over the years, and they've been in operation largely since, as far as we know, the 1840s, 1850s. So those are considered public roads despite the questions of unclear ownership. There are no plans at this moment that I'm aware of to do any sort of improvements like paving or streetscape on Green Street. Some of the other ghost roads may get that at some point, but there aren't any plans. I think limited plans for extension of sanitary sewer and perhaps maybe some, eventually some stormwater infrastructure, but that's about it right now. So yes, they can use a ghost road as their primary means of access because again, they are publicly dedicated. The question of ownership may still exist, but public dedication means that the public has the right and the public body has the obligation to, to maintain to a level, a standard level. So yes, they can do it. No, I don't believe that there's any intent to pave that. I think the idea is to keep the ghost roads in Bluffton as traditional as they are. I think that there is a lot of support in the community and at the town council level to try to maintain that, you know, their current aesthetic.
So with that said, that's, that's a big concern of mine on the condition of that road and the continued deterioration of that road, both for the neighbors, the people that live on that road and use it. That's a, that's a very big concern. And who's going to maintain that? How's that going to be maintained? Because that's going to continue getting increased counts in that, in that drive. So concrete apron, I don't know how that's going to work appropriately with the transition from dirt to concrete. I don't think it's going to work that well, number one.
As a, as a public road, the town will maintain it. The town will do, and Public Works will come out there and scrape it. The reality is if, you know, continued wear and tear on any of the roads may change what the plans are, and that's, you know, part of the concern and part of what town council has to consider in the future.
The other, another comment that I had, and, and I had some of the same comments from earlier, and some of the, the residents. The screening along the backside of that property to the adjacent property owner, that was another one of my concerns when I saw this plan, having that parking right up on that property line. And landscape is great, but something else needs to be thought through. If it's paneling of some sort, sections of fences that are a little bit higher, hogbin lattice, something like that, but something needs to be additionally thought through for that. And then another big concern is that dumpster. That dumpster location, because I know it's really close to that house to the north across from...
Hickory Trace.
Hickory, thank you. I do like the idea of that sidewalk, so I wanted to add that. I like that going and continuing on. I know there's several developments that are like that. So I do appreciate that effort right there of having that walk and having it covered because there's other, other places in Bluffton that'll, that offers that. So that's all my comments.
I share all of the concerns that have been stated. I think for me, we've talked about it at DRC, the trees make this unapprovable to me personally. I think it's pretty clear that there's been no effort to maintain the existing canopy, especially the 30-inch live oak and the magnolia. I also think reducing the size of the dumpster is not sufficient. It needs to be relocated, and the turning needs to occur without going into landscape beds or into buildings. So I just don't think the site layout works. And I would like to make sure that all of the pervious paving is detailed correctly to actually function as pervious, which is not the same thing as just being sanset.
My, my concerns are similar. I'm upset with all those trees coming down, especially the live oak and the magnolia. So that, that's a concern. And the turnaround, just, I don't understand how that would work at all. You're essentially having to back up into somebody's garage underneath a carriage house. There's probably a car there. If this thing is, if everybody's parked, I don't know how anybody gets in or out of there. And if an emergency vehicle ever had to get in and out. I know there's been no concern about that. But when you see the parking exhibit that was provided to us, it just doesn't make any sense to me.
I share, I share the concerns that have been raised. I do want to pause... I do wanna pause for a second. And matter of fact, Mr. Icard, you may, you may be able to speak to this. The upcoming Boundary Streetscape project, are we planning on a sidewalk on the east side? Do we not know at this point in time? Are we planning on it both sides, one side, or we're just not there yet?
Let me do some quick research, and I'll, I'll get back to you on that real quick.
Okay, because that, that plays into kind of the design of this project. Also, for the residents that are here, for my neighbors that are here, Boundary Street Streetscape is about to start within the next, I would say, twelve months. There're gonna be some traffic calming measures on there, and there's been very serious discussion, which I'm in favor of, of putting a four-way stop at Lawrence and Boundary to keep that race car effect from happening. So anyone I've talked to has been in favor of that, of that stop, just to help with it. With that said, back to this project. I don't use these words lightly, I think there's responsible development in Old Town, and I think there's development that tries to cram everything it can onto a particular lot, and my fear is that's what we're looking at here. It relates to what we've seen recently on Maiden Lane. The trees aren't accounted for. There is development in pretty much every part of this lot that technically could be per the code. The, while there is a nice front porch sidewalk, my concern is if, if there is a sidewalk along the east side of Boundary, that there're gonna be businesses here that put their products out on the sidewalk, so that sidewalk becomes an unusable sidewalk. And I think it may have been intentionally or unintentionally an effort to kind of get that building up on the sidewalk instead of building a sidewalk proper. I've got a lot of concerns about this project to the point where I, I speak for myself, and there are six of us up here, but I would wanna see it drastically reworked before we saw it again. And we did address it in Plan, in DRC. We addressed a number of these issues, and nothing has changed between then and now.
And to that, Charlie, I don't mean to interrupt, but.
No, go ahead.
Were the, I see, I see where comments, there was a submittal with some redlined comments from the applicant, but, but I don't see any exhibits that accompanied those redlined comments. BMP exhibits that should have been provided, that were requested by the stormwater. Were, were there, is, is this the full application, does everything that was submitted?
There were a couple of additional stormwater items, and it could have been compliance calculated, or we typically don't take that to Planning Commission because they're gonna do a full stormwater permit submittal.
I just wanna make sure they addressed all of the comments that came out of DRC.
They did not, their response to comments was, was kind of sporadic, they had somewhere they didn't respond to them at all.
And the, the tree comment was totally ignored.
Yeah.
For example.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I guess that was my point, was they, they kind of addressed the selectively the comment.
A little bit, agree.
Okay.
And, and don't, I, I feel like I need to say this in, with the applicant in the room. It's not that we don't want development on these lots, we just want it to be done well, we want it to be done responsible, we want it to fit in with the neighbors. I live maybe two blocks from there, and I'm in the middle of putting an addition on my house right now that could have been a lot bigger than it was, but it didn't make sense for the lot and the neighbors. And I think it needs to be reworked. And I think that's the sense we're getting off the commission. Yes, sir. Please. Come, identify yourself and your home address, and then please, and you're, you are the applicant?
Husband of Eric Friedlander. Five York Circle, Bluffton. We, first of all, we love Old Town. I wanna do the right thing. But this was an investment. We've been in this process now over three and a half, four years. Not pointing fingers, what have you. What, there's a code. Have we maxed it out to the code? Yes, we have. But there's a code and there are limits. What do you folks wanna see on the property where it could make sense for me and we can get something approved? What direction should we head?
I think the best person to articulate that as well, and going back to what you were saying with the trees, is, and that's the major concern.
Yeah, it's, you know, and, and it's, I get it's confusing, especially with the form-based code that's in the historic district, but just because you see the maximum limits, that's the maximum, that doesn't mean that's the maximum limits that may necessarily work when you take in design, take into consideration all of the designers' aspects.
But, like, could you give us, give me and the team, so the live oak's very important, I, I love live oaks. So you'd like to see that live oak saved, preserved? So that, that should be part of the new submitting.
And, and design, and design the building closest to that, that would have impact on that live oak, design it accordingly, so you're, you're probably gonna have to reduce the footprint and the square footage of that to make that work.
Okay.
Or you're gonna have to get creative on the design so that it's designed within, and Lydia can speak to the architecture, but I've, I've seen it happen. I mean, we have it in Palmetto Bluff, the, the things were, were measured specifically, liters of live oaks were measured specifically, and the building was designed to the tree. I mean, I, so. Well, and I mean, I, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna create your, your plan for you, I'm happy to.
But I just don't wanna keep, I don't wanna keep my ball rolling, my expenses long, I just, just wanna try to really.
Yeah.
Get a grip on what we're supposed to be doing.
Like I said, I'm, I'm paraphrasing, but it is, again, it's, the, the landscape should be considered in the design and saving of those significant trees. All efforts should be made to, to preserve trees and the natural landscape, especially, especially the thirty inch live oak that is deemed a significant tree in the standards of the UDO. The, the drive aisles, I mean, that's just simple, that's geometry. It doesn't, it doesn't work. You have a dead-end drive aisle, there's no, that you can't turn, there's no turning movement where that car can get in and out, so you're gonna have to reconsider how you get cars into and exit in address and e-drive.
On that, but we'll really look closely at that.
Yeah. The comments that Commissioner Brock made about, or, or was it Rich that made, Commissioner Delcor made about turning movements, you have to open the garage probably to make a turning movement in, in the, in that drive aisle.
Here, here, here's what it comes down to. There's a reason for the process, and we went to DRC, and there were comments made in the DRC meetings, there were comments made before and after the DRC meeting, and they were not all taken into account before showing up today. So, I mean, to be all, to be flat out honest, it feels like you're not taking it seriously that we're telling you changes that need to be made, things that need to be addressed, and yet here we are, and those things haven't been addressed, even conversations, anything being addressed on that, and here we are, and you're.
This is the first time I've been here, so it's, it's, I don't wanna point fingers, so.
No, and I, I'm not trying to point fingers either, but there, there is.
From your perspective, what you're seeing hasn't been addressed.
Yeah. I think the changes could be made to account for that. I think conversations, and this is entirely up to you, this is not a requirement, but conversations with neighbors to get them on board with and them give you a little feedback, like the fence idea is probably not a bad idea, or some type of greenery along the back. You know, I would strongly recommend, and it is your decision to table this, but I would strongly recommend that you go ahead and with, how do we do it officially, Dan? Is it table-ing, or is it, they withdraw, they don't withdraw? They don't withdraw the application, they.
I think, right, so your options are to approve, approve the conditions, or deny it. The applicant can withdraw the application for consideration at tonight's meeting, and then proceed forward once they've been able to bring their application closer into Planning Commission's expectations.
And historically, historically, if that's what you do, and you want to meet with a couple of commission members, and they're willing to do it to help you with a little bit of feedback, you can't meet with the whole commission for bringing back, that can help you go through that process to where, to where it makes sense to, to move forward. But I think you get a sense of where it's probably gonna go tonight.
Yeah, I, so I would like to option C, whatever.
To, to withdraw.
And then if, if we could.
I say.
Sure. If we, if I could meet with a few of you folks at some point, that really would be appreciated.
Let's work with, Dan, I hate to put something else on your plate.
I'm sorry?
Let's work to see, are there a couple of commissioners that would be willing to meet with him and discuss some of these? Would you be able to?
I can't, I'd have to accommodate schedule, but yeah.
Right, right. We're gonna have to. And Lydia, just because you're more architecture, probably, if that's okay with everyone else?
That'd be great.
Dan, if you don't mind facilitating that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Hey, good evening, Nathan Sturrie, Sturrie Engineering, I'm the civil engineer. I just wanted to address a couple of things that you guys said, just in a hope to make you understand kind of a little bit where we're at here. In terms of the fencing and the dumpster, that's something that can easily, easily be handled. In terms of a dumpster, I mean, would, would roll away for each unit? Why, we have service yards and we got a garage to keep them in. If we just remove the dumpster altogether, would that fit kind of everybody's concerns? Yeah, I think. In terms of the fencing, again, we'll, we'll add that to the landscape plan, that's easy enough to do. The turnaround, can I go back one? I just wanna explain what everybody's looking at here. So what I'm showing, a car does not have to come in and pull into the garage in order to back out, just like any dead-end road, it's gonna come in, if you don't wanna be there, you're gonna back out and go. What this is showing is the, the most remote spot that someone would have to get to, park, and then back out and leave, and you can see I was able to maintain the tires within the drive aisle. So my solution to this really is if we just extend that drive aisle another five feet, couldn't we ju, I'll redo the exhibit, it'll fit fine, and I think all of your concerns on the turnaround will be addressed. We're under a hundred and fifty feet in length, so we don't need a turnaround technically per the code. The trees, you know, the thirty inch live oak, it's not a pretty tree, but we can save that for our plan. The seven inch magnolia.
It's in the middle of your carriage house, you'd have to move the carriage house.
Or, I mean, could we propose a replacement tree in lieu of that? I mean, we're talking about a seven inch magnolia.
Can I ask a question? What is, when is the survey from?
Survey, it was probably three or four years ago.
Okay, well, it's not a seven inch magnolia anymore.
It's nine inches. So again, is there like a mitigation potentially we could do for that tree that you guys see that we can maybe beef up one of the planting trees to a four inch? That, that may address your concern, we'll, we'll drop another magnolia if you guys like.
I don't think it would be out of consideration.
Okay. We, obviously we'll remove the crosswalk up at Hickory Trace, that's easy. I did want you guys to know I worked with the CIP folks on their Boundary Street Streetscape and planned our utility plan and the sidewalk plan around it. While we're, while we're not showing a sidewalk right up on Boundary Street, there is not one proposed on the east side.
Okay.
And they're, they would like a, because we're doing a covered walkway, they need an easement for the Dominion easement that they're gonna go after, so they want five foot into the property for the Dominion easement, so we had to set that, set that sidewalk back five feet off that sidewalk. And then the Green Street, this came up in the DRC, whether Green Street improvements were, were gonna be required, which it, it came out that they were not gonna be required. In terms of the end treatment, where the concrete's gonna meet the dirt road, without constant maintenance, that's always gonna be an issue. Asphalt, no matter what material you use there, it's gonna be a failing point. So generally what you do when you're tying something up like that, you drop a, a concrete header curb there, and that's about as good as we can get it when you're dealing with a dirt road. Unless they, we propose gravel, which I know the developer would be open to potentially helping on Green Street if possible, but it, from what Commissioner Labrouche said, it sounds like that that's not what the town wants. So I don't know if any of these concerns can kind of like ease your decision, I think it's some simple tweaks to this plan. If, if you look at, Dan, how do I go forward? Oh, this. Right here, we got a big island right here where we're gonna propose a new tree, all we gotta do is shift that back around that live oak, and then at the time of architecture, you know, we can look at footings and all that stuff, surcharge loading, that's a big one for you, Lydia.
I don't think that's a substantial island at all, nor is that large enough to address saving that live oak, in my opinion.
Okay, well, we can play around with that, but if we are able to save that live oak and, and include it in the plan, I don't know if you guys have put eyes on that live oak, it's definitely not the prettiest tree in the world, and it's, something else would look better there, I think, but we can save that if that's the holdup.
Okay, well, thank you.
Residents speak or not?
Not at this point. We'd be more than happy to stay afterwards and talk to you.
I just didn't understand something he said, I'll, I'll do after.
Okay, that has been with, so if we would, let's move on to item number two on the agenda, parcel eleven A Development Plan. A request by Jake Reed on behalf of University Investments LLC for approval of a preliminary development plan application. The project consists of two commercial buildings with associated infrastructure. The property is within the Buckwalter Plan Unit Development, consists of approximately eight point eight acres identified by tax member in the agenda and located east of Buckwalter Parkway, south of Buckwalter Town Boulevard. Mr. Fraser.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a preliminary development plan for a project called Parcel Eleven A. It's a request by Jake Reed of University Investments LLC for approval of a preliminary development plan. It is eight point eight eight acre subject property, and it's located east of Buckwalter Parkway and south of Buckwalter Town Boulevard. Applicant proposes a construction of two single-story commercial buildings with the associated access parking utilities and stormwater infrastructure. The subject property is owned Buckwalter PUD and is within the Buckwalter Commons Phase One Master Plan. Here's the location of the parcel. Just, just east of Buckwalter Parkway, just south of Buckwalter Town Boulevard. This, this down here is the self-storage building that you see on Buckwalter, Buckwalter Parkway. Here's an aerial of the same location. This is Carolina Bluff Drive, it's actually a private road that comes up here, they're proposing connecting into it, and they have the proper easements already recorded several years ago that, that allowed for them to do such a connection. The applicant proposes two single-story commercial buildings totaling approximately thirty-one thousand four hundred square feet combined with associated parking utilities and stormwater infrastructure. Site will be accessible from Buckwalter Parkway with a secondary access from the extension of Carolina Bluff Drive. The applicant proposes a mix of office, retail, and flex service uses to be accommodated by a hundred and fifty-eight parking spaces. The minimum requirement is one hundred and fifty-seven. I should note that parking spaces as currently proposed would not allow restaurant use at all within the development, which requires additional parking. The Buckwalter PUD identifies a future alignment of Buckwalter Parkway on the subject property, the future alignment is not reflected on the proposed site plan. The applicant states that they are in support of the connection through the parcel, and they've left considerable area under the power line easements for the future connection. Staff comments were reviewed at the March twenty-six, twenty twenty-five DRC meeting, the applicant proposed a response to comments, provided a response comment to revise site plans on March thirty-one. This is the Buckwalter PUD Concept Master Plan, and here is the extension of the Bluffton Parkway as shown on the Concept Master Plan. This is what we're referring to as saying is not reflected in the site plan. This is the Buckwalter Commons Phase One Master Plan. This is parcel eleven A, the subject property is about the top half of this parcel eleven. The. Um, the allowed uses are general commercial within the ZDSO, which is essentially just about every commercial use that's available. Uh, we got site plans spread out over two pages. To your left is Buckwalter Parkway. They would be getting access off of Buckwalter Parkway. Um, I'm assuming, but was it called out that these would be bay doors in the back? And that is why the parking drive abuts against the properties? Um, I'll jump to the second page so you can see the extension of the site plan. Actually, the road wraps completely around. This also shows Carolina Bluff Drive connection. This takes you down. Carolina Bluff is where, uh, Parker's is at that location. Planning Commission shall consider the criteria set forth in Section three ten three A of the UDO in assessing an application for a preliminary development plan. These are the criteria and the response, staff's response to these criteria were included in the staff report. Planning Commission has the authority to approve the application as submitted by the applicant, approve the application with conditions, table the application, or deny the application as submitted by the applicant. Should Planning Commission choose to approve the application with conditions, town staff finds that the following conditions should be met prior to final development plan approval to be in conformance with UDO Section three ten three A. And that is to provide an exhibit at time of final development plan submittal that illustrates how a future alignment of Bluffton Parkway, which had an eighty foot right of way, could be built on the subject property with the current proposed Parcel eleven A site plan layout. So that is just providing an exhibit that shows that it can accommodate a, an extension of Bluffton Parkway if that were to be the case. Um, and I'll open it up for questions. And the applicant is here, is up to hear from them.
Would the applicant like to speak?
Not yet.
This is the first time Jake's ever turned down a.
Right, me too.
Commissioner, I'll start down on this end this time. Any questions, comments? Anything?
He's thinking.
Is, is there any way to get that right, eighty foot right of way on this plan? Is that, has that even been looked at?
Before we designed the site, we did that. But I think it's important to still qualify that.
Jake, I hate to tell you this, but you gotta come up to the microphone, cause we are being broadcast to.
I apologize. I, I got too comfortable. Uh, yes, we have. We, in fact, what we did before we designed the site was we looked around, uh, the town and what we specifically honed in on was a piece of the Parkway. This is driving, um.
Eastbound.
As you're going down the Parkway, if you're gonna cross over Malfris Drive, you know where the large curve is?
Oh.
And, um, what we found was that the width at that portion, at a pretty big intersection, uh, going into an intersection, I should say, was eighty-five feet. And we said, hey, look, let's, let's assign an eighty-five foot portion, uh, at the very bottom of the track so that we can still provide, in the event that it were to happen, uh, the ability for five B to be, be put there. And so that's what we did. We, we looked at that specific area and then we put it on the plan and then designed it. So, yes.
So you're amenable to submitting that?
Um, I am, pr- provided we're not put in a position where we're, you know, uh, it's just an exhibit as something that could be, right? There's no, there's no existing agreement for a right of way. There are no easements in place. None of that stuff exists. So it's, it's not a submission on our part of saying, um, uh, yes, it's, it's, if we're agreeing to let it happen per se, those things still need to be worked out. Uh, however, we do support it. We're probably the biggest supporter of five B and have been for the last twenty years. It hasn't been built yet. Uh, we still retain that position.
The question is, you designed with the parameters of eighty or now eighty-five foot right of way. So the site plan that we're looking at works for five B, should it come down there?
I'm, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you very, thanks for answering that. You, you answered my question.
That's right.
And Jake, the site, the eighty-five feet includes activity paths as well as the roadway?
It has two bike paths on either side of this area that shows eighty-five feet. And so you've got bike paths as well as the grading that's necessary to fall off on either side in that eighty-five feet.
Just from a historical perspective, when the, when the county designed over by Heritage Lakes and the Lowes and all that, they had to squeeze it in real tight and that's, that's what he's referencing there. And it does have everything within that measurement. All right together, but it does have. Any comments? Same thing?
Uh, just to clarify, Jake, the, the eighty-five feet is outside of your limits of disturbance to the property line. Is that what I'm seeing? It follows the radius of the pro- property line?
Can you repeat?
I don't have a pointer, but if you look at your, if you look at the property line at the bottom of the parcel, that would be.
No, where's? You're asking is, does the eighty-five foot right of way stay within our parcel?
Right.
No, it does not.
Okay.
You, not only would you have to take some of our parcel to accommodate the five B, but you'll probably have to take ten feet of, uh, of the, yes, Wapu to, to accommodate as well. So you'll have to negotiate with both parties.
Okay.
It's, it's not significant. Can I bring it up?
I see that.
And we do, we do need to retain a copy for the town's records, seeing as it's been submitted.
That's all I have, is the two copies.
And I think that's all the questions we had. The town needs to keep one of these. You can take one of them.
Can I supply you with a copy?
Uh.
Please.
Is that okay, Richardson?
Or, I'm sorry.
I know generally if something's presented to the body, it has to be put in record. Can he provide a different copy tomorrow? Or do we have to keep this one?
My, my, obviously my preference would be to keep this one because it's clear that that is what was presented. Uh, but what we could do, can we make a copy of it or is it? Yeah, I, I would just, I, I'm.
It'll, it'll reference what's been presented at the meeting. It won't necessarily be part of the submittal. Does that make sense?
I'll tell you, yeah, that's, I, that's okay. I'd prefer to give you an updated one, but that's okay.
Well, we want the updated one as well. And that's what it'll go off of.
Okay, we'll do that.
Okay, um. I'm lost. We are voting on this. Uh, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Tim, can you put up our?
All right, I'll make a motion. Yeah, I, I move to conditionally approve the Parcel eleven A preliminary development plan. Application subject to the following condition, uh, provided exhibit at time of final development plan submittal that illustrates how a future alignment of Bluffton Parkway, eighty foot right of way could be built on the subject property with the currently proposed Parcel eleven A site plan layout.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. And just to clarify, because this is a public body, anything presented to us, any citizen could ask to see. That's why we have to hang on to it.
Question, when you rip that, which section, if you have secondary ten feet from Edgar Buck?
That's, yeah. We didn't say it had to all be in your property. Well, it kinda does, I don't know.
It does. And I think it's. You know, that, that may be something that needs to be discussed or considered prior to, you know, as we approach final development plan, if it can't be accommodated. But right now, uh, from a, you know, from a strictly legal standpoint, the Ninth Amendment, as Mr. Reed mentioned earlier, does state that, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, I do, I think it's his property, that University Investments is provide, is obligated to provide the right of way necessary for the construction of the five B connector. Now, due to no fault of Mr. Reed or University Investments, that hasn't taken place within decades. We're, we're out under certain criteria, under certain.
I don't.
No, there are other pieces to that.
I don't think this is insurmountable the way it is.
I just want to make sure that y'all are aware why I believe that that was worded that way by staff, what the expectation would be. But again, I don't think it, I would have to agree, I don't think it's insurmountable. I think it's a, it's just one of those issues that needs to be addressed. But, uh, wanted to clarify the way the motion read and was, was adopted.
Out of curiosity, Jake, what went through the bike path on yours, on that plan that you referenced?
On, on the side of the road, the, what's measured from the edge of the road to to the grading to where it begins to fall off is fifteen point eight feet.
So to have room for up to ten.
I would imagine there, you know, eight.
Eight to ten foot.
Eight to ten foot sidewalks each.
And is there any requirement by the, by the county that you have to have a bike path on either side?
That I don't know the answer to.
No, because further down at the, at the circle right around the road, there isn't.
So, Tim, there's, work with that.
There's your, here's, here's one side and if the adjacent property owner, anyways, we, we need to move on, but you get the idea. Okay, uh, third item on the agenda, Beaufort County School District Willow Run Concept Plan Amendment. This is a workshop. There will be no action. A request by the property owner, Beaufort County School District for approval of a concept plan amendment. The applicant is requesting to amend the terms and obligations for the construction of future north-south connector road as established by Buckwalter Track Development Agreement and Concept Plan Ninth Amendment. The properties are currently zoned Buckwalter Plan Unit Development and consist of one hundred and forty-two point one one acres identified by the tax map numbers in the agenda, located south of US Highway two seventy-eight, east of Buckwalter Parkway. Mr. Frazier. No, you're not Mr. Frazier. It says Mr. Frazier.
Oh, it says Mr. Iker in there. Thank you very much, Chairman. Um, Kevin Iker, Director of Growth Management. I think these two know who I am. Um, so, and there's no one else in the audience. Um, so, uh, this evening we're here for a workshop. Again, there's no vote on this. Um, we have a project that's been coming forward, uh, for the past couple of months. Um, staff has, uh, done a presentation, uh, for a workshop in December with town council, um, as well as just recently in May, uh, to kinda give an update. So, um, as you stated, we're here this evening for, it's just more of this, more of a workshop for the concept plan for, uh, Buckwalter PUD. Um, and then I'm gonna go into, there's a, a lot of different applications and moving parts to this entire project. And US Planning Commission are a small part of that. Um, but I'm giving you, I'm giving you a larger context as to what, what is happening, um, both on the town council level, uh, as well as your, your side of things. So, uh, as you stated, uh, Beaufort County School District is under contract to purchase the property, um, of, that is owned currently by Indian Hills Associate. Um, and as you see on this map, um, I've highlighted in orange, there's three different parcels of land, uh, that there, uh, have the intent to purchase. And then highlighted in red is the property that is currently owned by the town of Bluffton. Um, and that was donated, um, by Indian Hill, uh, through the Ninth Amendment, as we just discussed. And we collectively refer to all of these properties as the Willow Run Track. Uh, so they've identified this property, uh, for potential, uh, future facilities, which may include a lower school complex, K through eight, uh, associated athletic fields, courts, uh, offices, or any structures that are intended to support the school operations. Um, and then the property that we own has been considered for affordable housing, um, or other uses that are listed in that Buckwalter Commons Land Use Track. So this is just to kinda give you an idea of the ownership of the four parcels. And then from an aerial standpoint, you can see here that we have the three parcels, uh, as well as the town-owned property here. And then just some of the, um, other things around, just to give you an idea. Uh, the reserve at Woodridge, uh, it's apartment complex, uh, to the south. The Foothills Land Conservancy Property, uh, to the south, Mooney Track to the, uh, to the east, and then two seventy-eight to the north. So we have, uh, like I said, we have multiple applications for consideration that are going to town council specifically for Planning Commission. It will be the, uh, Buckwalter Development Agreement and then the Concept Plan Amendment. So, uh, what we're here for tonight is a discussion and an input, um, for that development agreement for removal of the provisions pertaining to the north-south connector road. Other items that we have, um, as this moves, uh, forward and through the process, uh, will include, uh, we have an easement agreement that needs to be terminated. Um, and when you go back and you look at this plan, you can see this kinda line that runs through here. Uh, that is the easement that is, um, currently with Indian Hills and the town of Bluffton to allow access to our property. So, um, once the school district, once they own that and we go to move forward, uh, that easement is no longer needed. So we have to, it has to be terminated. Uh, so we have that. Uh, the land swap, um, we're gonna be moving some property lines around. So once the school district owns the property, um, we will, uh, we've already worked out a memorandum of understanding or an MOU, um, to where we're gonna swap land. So the land that we own down at the bottom, um, is more desirable for the school district because the school district wants to be further away from the road. And we wanna be closer to the road. So it just makes sense. Uh, so we're gonna swap them with, to allow for the minimum of ten acres of upland. Um, so the upland portion is obviously the most important. Wetlands are very important, uh, but not necessarily for, uh, for construction. And then, um, with that, in the purchase and sales agreement, uh, is just the, um, we're adding, oh, you know what? I'm sorry, that is wrong information right there. Bear with me here. Um, what we're gonna be doing is actually, the town is gonna be, um, part of that purchase agreement is to, um, the town will be paying two point five million dollars to the school district and in return, the town will get all of the development rights. Um, so what I've done here is kinda give you just a, a timeline, background, information of how, how we came about to, to where we are. So in nineteen ninety-six, um, this was, the Willow Run Track was, it was in Beaufort County and it had five hundred and ninety, um, RDUs, seven point four acres of commercial, uh, and, and that was it. So, and then in twenty, uh, excuse me, two thousand and three, uh, they petitioned to annex into the town and rezone into the PUD, which was still that Willow Run PUD. And at that point, it included five hundred residential dwelling units, two hundred and ten, uh, thousand square feet of general office, two hundred and fifty thousand square feet of retail. Then again, in two thousand and eight is when it was, um, it was incorporated into the, the Willow Run was incorporated into the Buckwalter PUD. And that's where we landed on that two hundred and sixty, uh, dwelling units, a hundred and sixty-two acres of commercial, uh, rights, as well as two, uh, one hundred and fifty hotel units. So, um, other things that we have is dealing with those obligations of that Ninth Amendment. So as the Ninth Amendment was coming through, we had the, uh, property donation, uh, which is, I've highlighted here, uh, Parcel four. That's the town-owned property. And that's where the three point seven acres within Parcel C are for affordable housing and the eight acres were for municipal purposes. And that Ninth Agreement does outline what's, uh, for municipal purposes. Other items that we have, uh, from an obligation standpoint, is that the right of way in construction of the north-south connector road, um, and that there's an eighty-foot relocatable easement on the recorder plats, and that's at two seventy-eight all the way, uh, at Eagles Point, running south to that future Parkway. And I've got some other, some other explanations of these obligations and why we've had some of the issues here. Um, so these properties, um, initially when they all came through, um, they have since been carved up, uh, sold off to other property owners. Um, the first one is, you can see that, um, we have, uh, Parcel five, which is, uh, currently referred to as the, the Mooney, Mooney Property or Mooney Track. Um, I, I can say this, that since town council did come out of executive session, that there is a letter of intent, uh, with the town and the Mooney Property to, for the purchase of that property. Uh, price-wise, I'm not sure what that is. Uh, that's still under negotiations, but we are, uh, looking forward to, are moving forward with the potential purchase of that property. Um, other ones are the, as we refer to, the Conservancy Property, Property or the Foothills. Um, the town is in the process of, uh, petitioning, uh, with, uh, Beaufort County to, uh, use what we refer to as that green penny, uh, sales tax, um, to purchase this property and then put that in the Conservancy aspect. And then the last property is the Inland, uh, Bluffton LLC Properties, which are all, uh, listed here as number seven. And you can see I've highlighted in red is a, just, that is a conceptual line on a map as to the location of the way uh, through that property, ultimately would terminate in what would be that future, um, Bluffton Parkway Phase Five B. So one of the concerns that we have in the way that that Ninth Agreement was set up is that, right now, um, you have multiple, um, phases that are, that trigger, uh, construction. So, right here, so, uh, the construction of Parcel B. So if you construct Parcel B, as. So if you construct parcel B for Phase One, it triggers the it's the triggering of the issuance of that final development permit. So if you're constructing five B, you issue that permit, you have to build that portion of roadway through the Mooney Track down to the what would be the Foothills Property, we'll refer to it right there. Phase Two, so Phase Two is triggered by the issuance of any development permit for any portions, parcels of A and or C. So if you go and construct A and or C, you have to build the entire roadway. So the problem is is that 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 condition, while it is a great condition to have for commercial development for the school system, does not necessarily is not necessarily appropriate. So what we are proposing with these obligations is the removal of them with with clawbacks, so that way if in the future there was commercial development error, that it would still the intent would still be there for that that development. But what it does is it changes these obligations. So and I'm going to get to the next slide here. Oh, sorry. So and I've got another slide in here that'll show the main factors of that purchase. Couple of the other things, what we talked about was the development rights that they're going to purchase. We then receive those development rights for the two point five million dollars that helps to pay for the property. And then we also deal with the land swap. So as part of this, we were going to swap that land. So what would happen is the 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 school would own the portion down towards the south and we would change. And then the town would own approximately the the ten acres of development. And then I'm going to get to let me just get to this slide here. So what we've done is the town has worked on some capacity studies. So a capacity study is this is not a development plan, this is not a plan at all, this is not a conceptual plan. So it is just to see how much how much land is needed for development. As we were talking about earlier with the Form Base Code, how like while you say the maximum that you can here put here doesn't necessarily mean that it will actually work. So that's why we put a capacity study together to see well what will work in those ten acres. So one option potentially is for multi-family development. You can see here that the make me do my math here, about a hundred and sixty-eight potential units at that location. The other option would be less units, what is that, a hundred and eight? And then a twenty-six thousand square foot performing arts performing arts center. So we're doing other studies to to determine the feasibility of a performing arts study. So that's a separate item that we're dealing with. But this just gives the ability to show what can potentially fit on the property as we were to move forward. We talked about the easement agreements. Again, we have a relocatable easement agreement with the Mooney Track as it runs through here. So anyone that were to if you were to develop in the Willow Run Track, you have that ability there. So the the right-of-way is there for the construction. So they were in agreement in order to have that road construct through their property for access for Willow Run. This is where it gets fun. So so the the some of the obligations that we have, we talk about that north-south connector road and that the school district has identified this as their site. So Yep. So that's the that's for the the connector road is the eighty feet. So that's the what we refer to as the north-south connector, which would be an eighty-foot wide right-of-way, the three twelve-foot travel lanes, ten-foot path. So Section eleven of the Ninth Amendment, where it says the town and the district desire to amend these terms of construction obligations as they pertain to the Indian Hills requirements for the phase construction. However, Section eleven also includes provisions, other aspects of the north-south connector road and associated improvements such as design, construction standards, signalization, access road, interconnectivity. So these will all be retained. So what does this get down to? It gets down to some of the items that we're looking to to make changes to this is that upon the development of any portion of the school district, the school facilities, the district will design, engineer, develop, and construct the north-south connector road from two seventy-eight to its connection point with Indian Hill Property in compliance with DOT standards and the Development Agreement standards. And then once their portion of roadway is complete, it'll be dedicated to the town. So the town will then take ownership of that road, which is a resolution through Town Council and the acquisition of purchase and sales agreement and then deeded with the Register of Deed. So VCSD will design and engineer the connector road to the point of the Indian Hill Property, to the southern boundary of the Mooney Track. They'll give us all the documents that we have in place. And then the town, at our discretion, shall design, engineer, except those portions that have already been engineered by VCSD, to develop and construct a north-south connector road from its connection point with Indian Hill Track to its intersection in the future Parkway. So what that means is that the obligations right now, as we go back, it's the road from all the way from the top down to to five B with the with that Phase Two. So if parcel A and parcel C construct, you have to build the entire roadway. And what we're trying to get at is to say that while we still want the roadway, this portion constructed to a point where the school district actually needs access for for whatever the development that they decide to do and the engineering all the way down to here at this point, they will do that. So that'll be part of it. But also right now is you're they would then be obligated to construct this entire road, which is not necessarily something that needs to happen right now. What will happen is that the town then has that ability to construct the road in the future when they decide to do it. So again, by that mutual ownership of the the site for it's not mutual ownership, excuse me, the school district's ownership of that site, it relieves them of having to build this road all the way down to to five B. We receive we retain those development rights. And in the MOU, and I don't I'm sure if we had, I think I put a copy of that in the staff report, where the school district after five years, up to twenty-five years, would then have the ability to purchase back commercial rights. Let's say that they they decided in the future that they didn't want to move forward with any school there and someone came to them and they wanted to buy that piece of property from them. They have a one-time shot at purchasing back commercial rights only. They cannot buy any of the residential rights or the hotels. And there is a price fix in there in that document with the the Consumer Price Index for for inflation, one time to purchase that. But with that is if there are issues or excuse me, we we have provisions in there. So that way, if that does go commercial, they would have to then build that roadway. I'm correct in saying that?
If they developed an A or C?
If it went commercial. Yeah, so.
If the school district sells it back to somebody?
If the school district sells it to someone else. So there that's a that's a big portion of what's happening. We have the land swap, we have the capacity study, the easements, all those easements also that run through Willow Run Track as it moves forward would have to be be removed. Bear with me here. So we also have the easement agreement, the land swap. While those are not germane to you, they are important aspects that are part of this entire process. And I'm going to have Richardson come up and explain a little bit more.
Real quickly.
Are you leaving?
I was going to take my head back here first.
Oh, okay. Oh, I thought he was coming up to speak.
Can the hundred and sixty-two acres of commercial be converted to residential?
It cannot. So the way that the the Buckwalter PUD has has been established, that there there are provisions for conversion, but there was a max set on that. And that max has already been reached. So as of right now, that hundred and sixty-two acres of commercial rights would be owned by the town just sitting there in perpetuity. And then we we don't necessarily, the provisions are not set up right now for any conversion.
Can the hotels be converted to residential?
That I don't think that we have anything in the provisions that that allow for that. You can you can use residential dwelling units to create a hotel, which is a half a unit or half a unit per room. So you can you can create a hotel if you have RDUs. But we don't have any provisions that allow you to go from a hotel back to residential.
This is one of the few areas I know of where we specifically approved hotels.
This and this is the only.
RDUs.
Yeah, this is the only one where where hotels are specifically listed.
So the town is buying those to expire them, right?
Yes. I I I don't want to necessarily say to expire them, but to hold on to them.
It'll go in the bank, right?
It goes in the bank. You are correct.
What, and thank you, you got me thinking on this. I appreciate you thinking that. What, if any of the commercial and the hotels can be moved somewhere else within Buckwalter?
But we will.
Into Willow Run or are they?
We will own them. So we will own the rights. And as far as I know, there are there's no provisions that restrict.
Town back here.
Yeah, that there's nothing that that restricts them just to Willow Run.
So if the school decides to take that option in twenty-five years to make a one-time purchase back, now who's the declarant for those rights?
Well, well, the school the school district. So the school district would then they have the right to buy them back.
Right, to sell to someone else. So now who's the declarant over those rights?
Well, whomever is then the owner. Now, and I would I would say I think I know where you're going with your next question is can there be any restrictions on those rights after they've they've been sold?
Right, are they will they could they be deed restricted so that they once they are sold to another, they can't be?
I don't know off the top of my head. I think Richardson might be able to answer that one, but that's that is a good question. And we we might have we might have, sorry, I'm pointing, we might have have already addressed that, but I just cannot remember off the top of my head. So.
Well, and the other the other thing that comes to mind, what if the town takes fifty of that hundred and sixty-two acres, develops it in ten years, and then the school district wants to buy it back?
Well, we can't. I don't think that we would do that. That's the intent, is that it would just sit there and we're not. Of course, it's it's now reserved. It's reserved for the next twenty-five years.
So it's not usable for twenty-five?
It's not it's not usable by by the town because they still have that ability to to purchase that back.
You see what I'm saying? Just make sure it's not double-used.
Yep. So.
We had five questions for you when you stepped out of the room.
Yes, that's what happens.
I'm ready.
Okay. I I please.
So we were there were some questions on the the options on the hundred and sixty-two acres of commercial that the town would hold the rights, but there is a there is a period, what, five to twenty-five years, that the school district has a one-time option to purchase those back. So could those or will those be deed restricted? When that the the school district would only want to purchase them back to sell them to someone else? Would they be deed restricted where they had to remain within Willow Run Track? Or could they be transferred outside of anywhere within the PUD?
So, you know, final agreements have not been signed yet. But the way that the current version of it reads is that it is a one-time option to purchase back at a set price plus CPI. And that will terminate after twenty-five years. It will terminate if any portion of the school district property is developed. And it is not allowed to be assigned outside of the school district property. So they can't exercise that right, sell those rights to somebody else, and then develop the property. We also have discussed, and again, all of this is still in the abstract, but we have also discussed corresponding rights of first refusal on underlying dirt as well. So that if the town decides for some reason or another, the town property, it doesn't want to develop into affordable housing or anything like that, but wants to sell to a third party, the district will have the right to buy that at a reasonable price and vice versa with the district's property. If the if they decide to sell that and they want to exercise that right of first refusal to get those development rights, the town will have a corresponding right to purchase the district property at a so either a either a predetermined figure or at whatever the offer is. You know, we're still we're still kind of kicking those things around. The whole idea is, I think, at the school, maybe one of the school district meetings and at certain, you know, I think it's been raised to council as well, the public is seems very supportive of this project. However, they are concerned about, you know, what's gonna what happens if the people in charge decide later down the line that they want to do something else with this property? They don't want to have this public public purpose behind it. They don't want to do a school facility. They don't want to do affordable housing. They don't want to do this, that, or the other. So we wanted to make sure that we put in their mechanisms for both parties to be able to protect the public's investment in this because it is a substantial, obviously, it's a substantial investment. I I can tell you I've that the town is under contract on Mooney. So that has been signed and on Foothill, so it's not just letters of intent. So they are moving forward and we're trying to schedule all of those at the same time, along with the school district's process, to make sure that, you know, this is everything's being hit at the same time. A few things have changed a little bit. This is one of those because things move around as plans get drawn out. Because of the contract with the Mooney Property, the town parcel is going to be, at least as planned, is going to be located very close to the that. Somewhere right there is going to be very close over here to the Mooney Property line. So originally, under the MOU, the school district was going to be obligated to build that first phase of this north-south connector road. And the town would build the intersection that would likely be necessary at St. Gregory the Great for the school school district. And the reason you have two of them is because the school district believes that they're going to be required to have two exits and two entrances. So because the town will be, at least under the agreement, taking title to the Mooney Property, determining where that road layout is going to be, and is going to be developing this portion of the property, just made sense to flip those obligations so that the school district is responsible for St. Gregory the Great entrance in anything in this general vicinity. And that the town would have the obligation for this portion of the north-south connector and then the secondary portion. So that is one of the things that has been discussed with University Investments or Inland Bluffton is the Ninth Amendment to that development agreement. Had a north-south connector road obligation and what were the triggering mechanisms for that? All under the assumption that Phase Five B would be constructed by that time. I think that was the assumption that was made. Phase Five B has obviously not been constructed. So that's one of the outstanding items that still need to be addressed.
I would just be very careful with that because one of those two intersections is going to get a stoplight.
Absolutely.
So one of the one of the obligations is going to be substantially more expensive than the other. So if you're not already going down that road, it might be take take both and divide by two.
So I think that they I think they've discussed that with my understanding is we've been discussing that with Department of Transportation and our, you know, the town staff has been working on that. And it, I think the last conversation we heard is that both both are going to have them. So despite their relatively close proximity. So it's, yeah, there are a lot of different moving parts, kind of a complicated deal. But again, if it's able to be, if everybody's able to work this out, I think it's going to be a a great project. It's going to preserve tons of property. What's important about the right of first refusal, I'm sure Mr. Iker mentioned it, is that the ability to buy back those development rights. And the town would be fully reimbursed plus, you know, CPI increase. Yet it would retain the two one hundred, the development rights for the two one hundred and fifty unit hotels, as well as two hundred and sixty residential dwelling units. So as part of this deal, the town would acquire that, obtain those, and be able to retire those if needed or, you know, dedicate portions of those two hundred and sixty dwelling units to affordable housing projects wherever the town sees fit.
So you can transfer them out of the PUD? The town can transfer them out of the PUD somewhere else or or?
Under under the under our current version, they can be used in.
In in Buckwalter. But if if we were to move them somewhere else, then that's it. Well, the well, moving them to the bank is not a transfer of development rights. That's just we now own those rights.
Right, because then you can reassign them anywhere, right?
We can assign them anywhere in Buckwalter PUD if we choose to. If we wanted to move them to somewhere other than Buckwalter PUD, that is a transfer of development rights, which has its own process, which would come in front of you. development rights, which has its own process, which would come in front of you during that, during that, during that process. And then you've got two development agreement amendments that have to happen, so it's, it's, it's a lot, it's a lot that would have to happen, in order for that to, to go through.
We haven't done that forever.
The town can do that, but the school couldn't do that, if they ended up...
That, that was the agreement that we struck on the right of first refusal, that we would be fine granting that, provided that those rights were limited to that property, because we didn't want the, for them to be able to buy them back, sell them to another parcel, and then continue to build the district property.
If, by my memory, we've done it, I think, out of Bluffton Park into Buckwalter, because it made sense to pull some of the development out of that, and then we stripped away a quarter or a third of those, and they went into nowhere. So it's, it's actually a good process for clawing back some of them.
And if I remember correctly, it's happened in New Riverside, Cometa Bluff area as well, once or twice, a while back.
Yep.
Yeah, well, we, we got additional...
Additionals.
Well, the, the development units were originally split off to, to, to New Riverside, but then in exchange for density, we, for no docks on the river, we got additional density, so we pulled 1,000 back from New Riverside, and that's how we arrived at 4,000.
Now 4,400. And so what is, just to turn you full circle, what is our tiny, miniscule, unimportant part in this?
Very important part.
Okay.
Very important part, is that we will come back to you with a public hearing recommendation. Like, like Richardson said, that Fourteenth Amendment, we're still working out all of the minute details, is that a good way of saying it? The overall intent of what we just explained to you is, is the, is what's going through. So we will have, we will have a final draft version, prior to the, that'll be in the packet for them to review. So that will be for you to make, make recommendations on.
Do we anticipate next month, or we're not sure at this point?
That's, that's our understanding, is that we'll have this next month. And I bet dates are subject to change, and then it did not give you any dates on there, so, that was smart on my part.
And we know it's a condensed timeframe. This, again, establishing the basic framework has been difficult, getting the documentation together is pretty difficult, I, you know, identifying where the properties are going to swap. But now that we're in this phase and moving forward, one of the reasons we have this condensed timeframe is that all these public bodies are under contract with private owners who, you know, want to make sure that this moves forward, because they've had their problems. The district property, I think, has been under contract for over a year. And so, it's, it's about trying to hit these, these timeframes that are set forth in that contract. So again, we wanted to bring it to Plenary Commission, so you could get an opportunity to hear about it, kind of get an in-depth review of it, bring up any questions that you have, any concerns that you see, so that we can try to address those proactively, rather than waiting until this public hearing, and then trying to scurry to get things taken, taken care of at the last minute.
I'll, I'll say this, it's, it's very comforting to see the school district and the town work together, because that hasn't always been the case.
So far, they've been a great, great partner on this, they've been working hard. Robert Otting over there has been doing a good job, kind of spearheading this, from what we can tell, with the school council, and Robert, since he's been before y'all a few times on some school district things recently, so, they seem to have been really excited about what they've been doing in Bluffton, and I, I couldn't agree with you more, Mr. Chair.
And I believe some of the concerns that you guys brought up is, are obviously concerns that we've tried to flush out, and make sure that they're being addressed.
I appreciate you coming at us with more than just what our little part is in it, help us understand the bigger picture.
Yes, like I said, there's a, just a lot of moving parts in this, and, you know, to, to put you in a, in a silo is not appropriate, so that way you have an opportunity to see the, the whole picture, so.
Appreciate it. Any other questions or comments, commissioners?
Thank you, sir. Okay, great, thank you so much.
Any items for discussion? Okay, do I have a motion for the final item? Anybody want to make a motion?
That's German, by the way.
A move that we adjourn the meeting.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.